In San Francisco, the school board recall election that's being fueled by backlash to some progressive policies. But more than that, might be a potential warning sign to progressives everywhere. When you have the phrase even liberal San Francisco parents. Well, they're signaling they've hit their limits, then you know you may have a political problem. Three school board members, including the president, Gabriela Lopez, are up for recall in the solidly Democratic city for pursuing symbolic liberal causes like renaming schools, you know, from people like Dianne Feinstein, as classrooms stayed shut due to pandemic restrictions. Recall effort has the backing of Democratic Mayor London Breed. She had that enough is enough speech on shoplifting a few weeks back. And according to the San Francisco Chronicle, has attracted nearly $2 million in campaign spending. So folks parental anger has been a force ever since schools went remote. And the political fallout around this issue has only intensified as we approach the midterms. And it hasn't mattered if it's in blue America or red America.
Okay, well, thank you Chuck Todd for your insights on how blue America and red America should exist without teachers. Like, that's really the message we should be pushing out on MSNBC. Okay, guys, let's just take a moment and digest what's happening. And, you know, this is San Francisco, San Francisco in a blue state, in a blue city with a blue mayor who is supposed to be, I don't know, supporting the people who backed the Democratic Party, the largest union in the country, largest public service workers. In this moment when workers are under attack, this is happening. And I, I think we really need to digest this and register what's happening. I am so grateful that our next guest has been on the front lines of this. She's one of the three members who have been facing the attacks. Commissioner Allison Collins is the former Board of Election Commissioner for the San Francisco Unified School District. Recently recalled because what on earth? Okay, Allison, thank you so much for joining us just to start with that. And I am so sorry that you've had to go through this. You know, I do want to also note that I find it fascinating that the three people that were being recalled are also, you know, women and people of color. So.
And educators.
And educators, of course, yes. Okay, um, where do I even begin with this? First of, how are you doing? Let's start with that.
I'm doing well, I think, considering this has been going on for a really long time. And you talk to any, anybody who served in education at all, right? Teachers right now are burning out like crazy. But school board members across the country have been under unprecedented attack for the last year. So I think anybody who's just, you know, able to persist and, you know, it's been incredibly difficult to do any, you know, real work with all these school board attacks, recalls and things like that. But I think, you know, the, this is a volunteer job. This isn't, most of us don't get paid and you look across the country. Most of the folks who volunteer to do this work do it because they love public education and they love, you know, love school, public schools. And so, um, you know, I don't know what else to say. I'm grateful to have been able to serve during the pandemic because I think at least in San Francisco, as compared to other parts of the country, we were able to, to take a lot of steps to keep our communities a lot safer than we're seeing across the nation.
I think it's so important that you said it's a volunteer job because, you know, teachers across this country are really not paid anywhere near a livable wage. I have, my mother was a teacher. I have family members that's, I'm very close to the teaching community, very good friends of mine, who in Arizona were part of the red state revolt there. And I have, one of my friends in particular, I talked recently, has two children. And, um, you know, they, they can barely pay their rent in Arizona. And they've been forced to move many times, but they're so dedicated to teaching that it's, it's, um, it's really kind of beautiful to see that kind of dedication from, from folks who are so invested in, in making sure that we preserve our, our, our basis. I mean, this is, this is the basis of democracy. This is what's going to get us out of whatever mess we're in. So it's, it's really horrifying to see, especially in San Francisco, these type of efforts successful. So I, I know that you guys have issued a report, a recall report. I want to start with just how it happened. Like, how did this happen? Why San Francisco? And, and, you know, why your school board?
Well, I'll tell you, it's actually happening across the country. And I think, I just, I appreciate shows like this where we can really have meaningful conversations. As you know, most of the mainstream media, it's about soundbites. And a lot of it is, is funded by PR companies and, you know, what, what I'm seeing nationally is an attack on education, public education specifically. And so when you look at the larger context, San Francisco is no different than any other part of the country right now. You have an unprecedented number of, of recalls this year. In 2006 to 2020, there was an average of 23 recalls a year against 52 school board members. This past year, you had 84 as compared to 23 and against 215 members. So you see a huge spike in recalls nationally. You also see, you know, just all this energy right now with these, you know, the Republican Party last year became the party of parents with, and, you know, they credited that messaging and that strategy to winning the Glenn Youngkin, you know, election. You have also just a rise of recalls related to school reopening. And parents, quote, parents coming into schools and, you know, raging against wokeness through anti CRT policies as well as, you know, there's also a weaponization of the, um, the South Asian hate movement with this, you know, you're seeing Asian American conservative groups fighting against affirmative action. So, so all of those, there's a confluence of, of things that's been happening nationally. And basically what you see is, is the Republican Party and right wing, you know, they've, they understand that if they want to take back power, they're going to mess with our right to vote, but they're also going to take back local elections. And, and school boards are pathways to power, right? Most people, I'm running because I actually am an educator and I want, I want to stay on the school board. But a lot of folks enter into school boards and, you know, local county offices, and then they move on to higher office. And so this is really a national strategy and you see it. I mean, they're telling us what their strategy is. You have Steve Bannon has said, we're taking action. And that action we are taking is we are taking over school boards. He said that, right? You have Chris Ruffo, who, who crafted the whole anti CRT. It's a campaign, it's a messaging campaign. And he said, it's time to clean house in America, remove the Attorney General, lay siege on the universities, abolish the teachers unions and overturn school boards. They are telling us what they're doing. And for some reason mainstream media wants to kind of approach this as a bunch of individual issues like San Francisco.
That's right, that's right.
All the woke people, and then you have Florida, you have parents that are mad about CRT. You know, obviously, San Francisco, you're not going to sell a strategy of anti CRT in San Francisco, but what you did have was you had parents upset about school renaming. Or you have parents that are mad that we desegregated one of our elite high schools, right? Those are, those are issues that involve race and segregation and these kind of culture war issues. But it's just, it's really just a messaging campaign. You have some really standard, you know, messaging and arguments, but then they just get tailored for a local market. And so in San Francisco, we don't have any successful Republican candidates. So you have moderates and you have Democrats. In, in other cities, they would be probably running as Republicans. And, and so that's why I think it's, it's, it is, you know, we can all, we can disagree as Democrats as well. But I think it is very disingenuous to say that this is, you know, Democrats versus progressives when you have $500,000 being funded by actual Republicans. Like $2 million for a, for a, for a recall election. And many of the donors are Republican donors. David Sacks fundraised for DeSantis in San Francisco. He was one of the primary donors. We have William Obendorf is also a Republican billionaire. So, you know, there were parents, Democratic parents who also voted for the recall. But I think largely this recall got its juice from, you know, neo liberals, Republicans and libertarians and corporate interests. I mean, we even had Visa and Wheelchers Association, right? The charter associations, those are the organizations that were really fueling this effort that got it on the ballot. And just like across the country, right? They weaponized parental frustration and anger about schools being closed. And also weaponized, you know, some of the old school anger about change. And so this is just another take back kind of America movement. But now we're seeing it's in San Francisco and, but utilizing the same tactics, really same messaging strategies that we're seeing nationally.
I mean, it's, it's so fascinating and I, I say this a lot on the show because I want people to understand as, as you're doing. You know, the teachers' union is, is, it's obviously teachers and educators have been on the front lines during this pandemic and have dealt with so many different issues along the way, not to mention these, these smear campaigns and actual political campaigns to, with a lot of money to take out educators for, you know, volunteer positions, as you said. But the largest public sector union, the largest public sector workers in this country are educators. The largest donors to the Democratic Party are the teachers' unions. If we don't think this is a Republican play to weaken Democrats, and I think we need to say this out loud more because London Breed or anybody, any Democrat who runs with a D next to them and is in office and supports these efforts should frankly, in my opinion, be exposed for not being in line with the Democratic Party. You want to weaken your party, you weaken teachers. And, and I think like, the word is out about charters at this point. So it doesn't, I don't, it doesn't look like this is a charter campaign, but obviously there's a lot of charter money going into this.
Well, where it's coming honestly is vouchers. So charters are dead and you're seeing a lot of activity with vouchers. And, you know, with the pandemic, you saw a rise in homeschooling, which also that's privatized, unregulated education, right? So you talk to anybody who follows charters, they, you know, they were seeing this too. You know, even when we closed down and all these micro schools came up, those are also, you know, there, it's basically a way to privatize public education dollars, moving them out of local oversight. And that, and this is where it comes to democracy, right? I'm an elected official, if you don't like me, you wouldn't vote me out. But charters, there's no real oversight unless, you know, every few years you, you, you know, you go in and you say, okay, I'd like to renew my charter, but on a day to day basis, we have meetings every, like twice a month. Parents show up and they voice their concerns. You know, it's very easy to see, you know, your local government in action. When you go to, to vouchers or you go to, to chart, to charter schools, you're, you're basically allowing a private organization, even if it's a nonprofit, it's a private organization to manage those dollars and, and run public education. And so, you know, that's, you know, so it's, it's, you've got, I think, really a confluence of, of interests. You've got maybe more conservative voters who are unhappy that schools are embracing anti racist education, pro LGBTQ education, they don't like that. You have conservative, just, you know, Republican or right wing interests that see an opportunity to take political power through mobilizing parent anger. And then you also just have opportunists, people who can make money off the system. And I think that's why you see charters. And then you also see the tech sector. There's a lot of opportunity, you know, for them as well, you know, as we've gone online, for them to make money. And, um, you know, so you, you have kind of, like I said, a confluence of interests coming together and seeing an opportunity during a time of really great distress for our country and based on the pandemic.
You know, I'm, I'm, I'm happy you mentioned Steve Bannon because I caught an article in the New York Times. I've referenced quite a bit on the show in December where the Proud Boys proudly announced that they are running for city councils and school boards now. Proud Boys who, I'm going to guess are not educators. You know? Hopefully not, I'm just gonna, I, I help us find one. I'm very curious if there's one out there. But I mean, this is really the framing that I think is, is so important for people to understand. You know, you can have educators on these school boards who understand their communities, who understand the system, who understand the children. Or you could have Proud Boys. And, you know, I just don't understand how someone like a London Breed could so aggressively champion this. And have you had any sort of communication with her? What's, what is the teachers' union, whether it's local or national?
The teachers' union is a big issue because when you look at California, we educate the most children in the country as a state. And then you look at California Teachers Association as the largest union in our state. So if you want to run for governor, you know, you, you want CTA backing you. And so it is a statewide issue and San Francisco definitely is a leader, right? When it comes to districts in our state, we're one of the larger districts and we have influence on things like that. And so, you know, there are, you know, like I said, we don't have traditional, like in other states, you have Democrats and Republicans. We have, we have moderates and progressives, but, and, and Mayor Breed is associated with moderate kind of political party. And then we have, you know, progressives. So we have those similar kinds of battles in our city around, you know, who's in charge of City Hall and who makes decisions. And, and so there are, you know, not on a national scale, but locally, very important kind of power plays happening with the school board because me and my colleagues were considered progressive. And, you know, so those play out on a local level. But I also think, you know, our elections cost so much money. And if you want, you know, I ran my election for $40,000, it was grassroots, similar to my colleagues. In the last four elections, a million dollars was raised by school board candidates in total. And so to have a recall where they're, they're able to raise $2 million just for a recall election, right? That's a real signal to, you know, and some of the people behind the recall were failed Board of Ed candidates who raised more money. And so I think this is just really a way of, of kind of, folks are flexing their power politically and, and showing that they can, if they can't run in a regular election, they're going to use recalls. I think it sets a very dangerous precedent in California. But, you know, they can flex their power and say, well, we don't have to run in a regular election. We can, we can do a recall election, which is a lower voter turnout election. And we can get candidates that weren't able to get elected in a regular election on there because we have, you know, less people of color voting and less working class votes. And, um, and so I think, you know, that's where I think it gets really troubling is that it sets us up, you know, in California at least, you can recall anybody you don't like in an off season election with enough cash.
That's, you brought up such an interesting point and I want to reiterate it and maybe ask you the numbers if you have them. So this is, this is, this is not a normal election. So when you don't have it, you know, it's, it's low turnout in general happens in, in California, unfortunately. And especially when it's not a presidential year. But then you, you know, municipal elections in particular are low turnout and pretty much everywhere on, in the country at this point. So it's extremely low turnout. But in terms of how low can, like?
So in a regular election, 75% of San Franciscans normally vote for a school board election.
That's actually great, by the way, that's a very great number compared to Los Angeles, which is like 9%, I think.
We're a very political city and it's, it's a small city in a sense. So it's kind of like a big town. And, you know, you, when you look at LA or, you know, New York, you have millions of people. San Francisco has about 800,000, maybe 900,000 people. But you get about 75% of the electorate voting in the recall, you had 25%. So you have a much smaller percentage. And then the folks who vote are a different demographic than you would get normally. But additionally, I think what's also important is in, in a regular election, when I was raising money, you're asking everyone to help you get money, $500 is the max people can donate. But because this was a proposition, it wasn't an election. Because it's a proposition, there's no limit. So that's why you have somebody like Arthur Rock can drop $100,000 at a pop. And ultimately he ended up donating $500,000. That's a quarter of this whole budget.
Wow.
You can't, 500,000 compared to 500, right? So that's one person can have basically, you know, buy an election. And, and additionally, I think there's a win win for them because even if they lose, right? They've been able to amass a large amount of money and they can use it however they like. So, so if I'm running, I'm running for me, if I win or lose, that money I can kind of, you know, any leftover money, I can spend it here or there. But this is an opportunity for them to raise wildly, you know, great amounts of money. Even if they had lost this election, they can take that money and then funnel it into candidates that they want to run in the fall. And so I think the reason this is so important, and I'm really glad that you're doing the show, is it's not, this is not just about San Francisco. This is what's happening nationally. And I think that's why you have former Vice President Mike Pence kind of proing about, you know, yes, this is a, this is a repudiation of wokeness by the Democrats and kind of we're coming to get you. This is a national model that I think the Republicans are going to want to play out nationally. And through these irregular kind of elections and through, you know, in, in California, this ability to, to run a proposition and, and establish, basically they're, they're getting voter lists together.
I was, yes, exactly.
A whole bunch of fundraising.
It's an organizing moment for them.
Right. And so even if they had lost, they would have kind of been ahead for the November election. And I think we're going to see this between now and November, all across the country, we're going to see, you know, people sharing this as a strategy for taking over kind of local political power. And then that is a play for 2024. So, you know, that's very clear to me. Like if you've got Bannon and the Republican Party saying this is our strategy, they're playing it out. And it's, it's, and they've invested in, in this model. If they can do it in San Francisco, then they can do it anywhere.
What I don't understand though is California, I mean, yes, it used to be a Republican state and, and there, you know, are parts of California that are definitely more conservative. It is a lot of money and effort to put into California in which I'm, unless I'm not seeing something and they're depending on low turnout on other parts, yeah.
Yes, yeah, I mean, California as a, as a state, we educate most of the children here. So when you look at school boards and like CTA is the largest union. So if you want to really disrupt, and also, you know, just looking at San Francisco, other than Los Angeles and Oakland, we've been able to really keep charters out of our district. And I'm one of the largest kind of proponents, you know, for, you know, so I'm a great target. But I think as a city, it's a smaller city and San Francisco doesn't like big box retailers. You know, so you just say, look, their Walmart pays for charters. And then people who don't even know anything about public schools will oppose them. They're, they're not popular. But if you can get charters into San Francisco, I think we are, you know, a real trophy. And, and so I think that, that is why you would want to invest. I mean, if you've got somebody like Charlie Kirk regularly talks about San Francisco, right? And, you know, we're on, you know, the Tucker Carlson Show as, you know, regularly as when we advance progressive policies. So to have this as a win is, is a feather in their cap. And, and, and I do think they've been really, really honing, you know, their strategies. And, and I, I think, you know, you've got the on the ground strategy, but you also have tech. And you have a lot of disinformation, you know, Twitter, we have Twitter, we have Facebook. And what I've also noticed in this campaign is a really, uh, just intense amount of disinformation online that it's all existed, but a real explosion.
Weaponized.
Weaponized targeted harassment and what is Asha Rungapa, she's, she's a former FBI agent. She talks about domestic information warfare. And, and I think we're used to thinking of it on a national level. I think there are right wing folks who are figuring out how to weaponize information. And if, if you're in a small, you know, San Francisco is a, maybe a big city, but it's small enough of a community that you can really disrupt how people get information. And that was, I think, one of the most frustrating things about this was just the amount of disinformation. With this whole idea that we didn't open schools because we were so focused on renaming schools is just misinformation. We weren't talking about it. But if you repeat something enough and enough, then people think, gosh, that seems really silly. You know, and I'm like, yes, it is silly, we didn't do it, you know, but it doesn't matter. And so.
Yes, exactly.
When you have that kind of reach and you have the ability to, you know, weaponize Twitter in a sense, you have trolls and bots attacking people, shutting people down, as well as just dumping a whole bunch of misinformation. It just overwhelms the system and especially during a pandemic. When people are not out talking to each other and they're relying on Twitter and Facebook and these social media spaces, those are our public spaces where we share information. And so that's something I also is, is going to be expanding, I think, in all types of races locally. And people are not aware of how much misinformation is out there and how much it's weaponized and how much, you know, how many bots and trolls and just targeted inorganic campaigns are, you know, we're not, it's, it's not just Russia.
Oh, no, no, we, we are definitely used to this. We literally last, I started off the show saying I'm, you know, I said, I'm very tired, I didn't sleep. You know why? Cause I woke up to 1,500 bots attacking me over, uh, you know, challenging somebody. I mean, this is, this is, it is warfare and it's, um, and I, I said, you know, Congress needs to do something about this. And of course, you know, they started calling me, it was like a McCarthyist attack. I'm like, no, that's not, actually not what I'm talking about. Congress has a job and it'd be great if our government operated, unless you like being in a completely, you know, unregulated free market space. If that's the case, maybe you're not on the left, but these are my, my opinions on this.
Really important and I just want to add, like, it wasn't just me getting targeted. Parents that would comment or, or share were personally getting targeted and doxxed by some of these campaigns. And so it becomes really unsafe, not just for me, but for student leaders who are speaking out about things. And so that really shuts down democratic dialogue and it keeps people, there were a lot of parents who were scared about reopening. Would, one, I wrote, read policies to help keep our schools safe. And I said, will you be comfortable with me sharing that you helped me with this? They all declined because they were getting targeted. And so it, it really isn't impacting our democracy.
That's right. It's there to silence people, it's there to silence dissent. And, and these are also spaces, I, I have to reiterate this over and over again. These are spaces, these algorithms are not just designed by white men, but they are feeding, they're promoting and pushing white male perspectives. And, you know, when you don't have other perspectives in a room, it's the, it's the legacy of Gamergate. We saw what happened with Gamergate. It's now playing out in real life and in, in, whether it's YouTube politics or, or on, you know, in real impactful campaigns involving, you know, school boards. I mean, this is very, very real. And I will never shut up about this and, you know, I, I am really happy that you're not either. I've had a ton of stuff thrown at me. I imagine you are, you know, and there's many times when I get frustrated and I feel unsafe. I had to move apartments, like I'm just going to be real and I'm sure you're in these situations too. And it's important for us to talk about it so that people who might be white males are aware of it and can use their privilege in this space to, to call it out because it's, um, you know, I, I often feel like if people don't feel it, they don't see it, they don't think it's real.
Yeah.
But, you know, you're, this is a volunteer position for you and you've really put yourself out there and you've taken the worst types of attacks from the worst types of people. I just, my only question I have left is before, before we tie this up, and we'd love to have you back on, by the way. This is such a big conversation that I feel like we barely even touched it. Is there an effort to reform the recall effort? I mean, we've seen how it's been used as a weapon. And I imagine there's no elected official in California isn't worried about being recalled themselves right now.
Well, I, locally, I think immediately we have a board of supervisors. They started discussing policies to make it more difficult to file recalls. I think it's really great that they realize, oh, I'm next. And then they decided to implement this, this new policy. But, you know, I think California is unique and it's, it may be different in different states. But I think the, the big picture is, is that, you know, as, as I said before, we have this. you know, as, as I said before, we have this national strategy of really disenfranchising voters. And folks, you know, are using whatever tactics they have available to them locally. And so we have redistricting, we have, you know, people's voter rights being restricted. And they're also looking for ways that they can either force resignations via information attacks, which is what happened to me. They tried to get me to resign and then, you know, but additionally, you see it in, in Boston. There were several school board members that were forced to resign based on claims that they were anti-Asian or, or anti-white for integrating Boston Latin. You see this in Luden County, Virginia, around Thomas Jefferson High School, you know, all across the country with anti-CRT. Or, you know, there's a lot of these, and so, so there's a kind of a direct link between if they can't do it policy-wise, they're, they're doing it through propaganda and these information attacks. So, you know, whatever works, you know?
It would, it would be really amazing if there were organizations out there, and I know, I know that they exist, that could do briefings for press on, on like the strategies. Because I do think a lot of people fall for this. I think some people just don't care and they have their own agendas and they're going to do what they need to do because they're on networks that are funded by a lot of the, the folks. But there are definitely some folks who fall for it. And I think, you know, media literacy around how, I mean, media literacy for the media, not for the, the viewers, on how this misinformation is being weaponized and these, these tactics are being used and who's behind them. And not to fall for a CRT because they can come up with any, I, I don't even, I don't even give it power because the more you give it power, the more it becomes a thing. And it's, instead it's just like attacks on teachers' unions because they don't want the Democrats to be in power. I mean, that's really what this is about, they want power.
Organized labor.
That's exactly, exactly.
When you have organized labor in San Francisco, they team up, they work with other labor unions. They increase that power because they work in solidarity with one another. And so you have companies like Uber, you know, or other companies. They don't want labor to be powerful in any, anyway, because they all, you know, labor unions like working together because they organize. So, yeah, definitely. There's a lot to talk about.
Allison.
Being able to talk, but also just all the other content that you provide is really, really wonderful.
You're very kind, Commissioner Allison Collins. I'm so grateful for, for your work and your courage and putting yourself out there and, and speaking. And I hope more folks have you on to discuss what's happening and, you know, just, just grateful.
I wanted to make one plug. I am going to be launching a podcast where I can have these types of conversations with the folks that are educating me. So I talked with Dr. Grayson. He started the, the Rachel Violence Silvis after Heather Hire murder. But I'm also talking to folks from Zin Education Project who are pushing to fight back and educate, worth working with other educators to, to mobilize and educate folks. So I encourage people to check me out on my socia's. And also I'll be launching that podcast shortly and it's called Just Talks. And I'm really excited to be able to do this type of thing with folks that are like on the, on the ground, pushing back on these attacks on education justice.
I love when activists and folks who are on the ground get involved in, in media because there's, there's a whole lot of people with hot takes and who read a lot of theory, which is important. Not a lot of folks who've actually lived it and can smell things before, you know. You know, it's, it's true though. I mean, it's, it's a muscle and, and when you've been an organizer and you've been on the front lines, you can smell things before maybe the general public sees them coming. So it's really important to, to have your voice out there. So thank you, Allison, for joining us. Good luck and I hope you run again for something else very soon. It would be really amazing. Really want to see you in office because we need more teachers in office and you're fierce as F. So thank you.
Thank you for your time.
If you're not already, please make sure to support us on patreon.com/thenomiekeyshow. That is how we fund the show. Make sure to like and subscribe. You gotta get those likes and subscribes up. We've put a lot of thought and effort on what it means to be, to, to do this show and to be in solidarity with other hosts and what kind of guests we have on. But we're only able to do that because we have patrons.